All right. I'd like to call the, call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, June 7th. First item on our agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller? Rosado?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Connolly? Chancet? Solfah?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay? Uwer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And vocalsinger. We have eight out of 14.
Ah, Malay is here. I just joined. Sorry.
Thank you. We have nine.
All right. Item number two is a reminder to please speak directly near a microphone for the recording for BATV this evening. And then item three is approval of minutes from April 19th, 2022. Any comments or corrections on those? Make a motion and make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Serone, second by Solfah. Roll call, please.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocalsinger? Rosado?
Aye.
Back?
Aye.
Connolly? Chancet? Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman? Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
And Uwer?
Aye.
Motion carried 10 to zero.
Okay, thank you. Up next we have edits removed, added or changed. Anything tonight?
No.
Nope. Okay. Item five, matters from the public. Anything not on the agenda tonight? Anybody online?
Yep.
Okay. Hearing none. We'll move on then to item number six, which is a presentation on single-use bag fees. The Batavia Environmental Commission. Welcome.
So, let's see. Needed to stop sharing right before? Or you need to stop?
Thanks for the reminder.
Okay. And then, I share?
Shares. Oh, the shirt. Yep. And then the PowerPoint icon there.
Let the record reflect that Alderman Lehman has joined meeting.
And should be good.
Yeah. All right. Thanks for having us. So, as you're, as you know, we're the Batavia Environmental Commission. My name is Alex and we also have Carolyn here and Emma. We are going to be talking tonight about our proposal for a single-use bag fee to reduce single-use plastic in Batavia. And I guess I'll preface this too with, I know that there was a news article that was released, I don't know if that was about a month ago, and kind of generated some talk within town and in council. And we did have a plan to present to you guys, and unfortunately, that news article came out before we had a chance, kind of jumped the gun. But we're here now to talk about that. Before we get into our proposal, we wanted to talk a little bit about background of plastics. Plastic production really started in the 1800s initially, when it was developed. And it did offer a way for a reduction of natural resource use. So, we are heavily dependent on wood, animal bone, and animal fat. So, that was good. However, we've now become so dependent on it, it's ingrained in our daily lives. And obviously, as we know, there's a lot of use of plastic now. And although plastic is recyclable, as you can see in this chart, most of it actually ends up in the landfill. And things are in the landfill, do not break down, they just kind of sit, and we need more landfill space. So, it's become a problem today. We also know a lot about, as we've seen in the news, plastic doesn't always end up in the landfill. A lot of it, especially plastic bags and lightweight plastics, escape the disposal trucks, end up in our natural areas, in rivers, flow downstream, end up in oceans, impact our marine animals. We also have a lot of harmful effects on humans. We also have a lot of harmful effects on humans, both from extraction and transportation of oil, the refining and manufacturing process, produce plastic, um, find plastic particles that break down in the environment and we then ingest, along with other animals, then ingest that. And then also, as I mentioned, waste management. What do we do with all of this plastic that needs to be disposed of? I'm not going to spend a lot of time, like, digging into these details. I think we've heard about this over the years and you should have also received a packet of information that you can read there at some other point. And we'll also provide a copy of this presentation to you as well. Again, just to reiterate how much single-use plastic products actually don't end up in landfills or in recycling facilities. I know I've seen it a lot on the Fox River, in town when I'm walking on the river walk, in forest preserves, when I'm in the woods or the prairies. So, um, it's obviously a nuisance from that perspective as well. So we are all familiar with this adage of think globally, act locally. And that's really what we want to do here in Batavia. Just again, reiterating the environmental impact that plastic use has on marine animals. A hundred thousand animals are estimated to be killed each year as a result of plastic bag pollution. Um, there's enough plastic thrown away each year to circle the earth four times. Every minute, one million plastic bags are used and less than one percent of those bags are actually recycled. Um, another issue of plastic bags specifically is that a lot of people mistakenly think that to recycle them, you can put them in the herb side recycling, which is not the case. And when that does happen, it will clog up the recycling machinery and those have to be shut down. Gray's Lake Waste Management reports that it costs nearly fifteen hundred dollars per hour when machines are forced off to clear those plastic bag blockages. So for our proposal, which we'll get into in a little bit, we are including single-use bags. You may have heard me mention a few minutes ago. So that would include both plastic and paper bags. So why are we including paper bags? A lot of people may think that's actually a more environmentally friendly alternative. While paper bags do decompose, um, if they escape our waste streams and recycling streams, they do actually generate more air and water pollution in production than plastic bags. And also require more energy to recycle than plastic bags. Um, so that's ultimately with our proposal and the goal of having a fee is to reduce our consumption of single-use products and encourage reuse of either these plastic or paper bags or use of reusable materials. So I'll let Carolyn take over the plastic survey that we released the other month.
So a group of us from St. Charles, including members of the Natural Resource Commission and Batavia Environmental Commission and some community members got together and have been working on this process together. And we decided that we needed just a little bit more information to kind of get, to take the temperature of the community. And we really thought it was important to try to share this across the Fox Valley. So we, we did a press release, we got in the newspapers. Uh, we were in the city e-blasts, we were on Facebook groups. We, we made an extra effort to try to get it in places that people necessarily wouldn't look for environmental information. So I think that the, the survey did pretty well. We got three hundred and seventy-three people to respond to it. Uh, this is the location of the respondents. Um, as we guessed, in Batavia, um, we, we had probably a little bit more outreach. And, you know, I shared it at a few more places. But I was, I was really heartened that it got into places like Elgin, St. Charles, and Geneva as well. Because they're an important part, you know, we're, we're downriver, right? So it's important to, to kind of get a feel for this whole issue from everyone. So, uh, you were sent a, a copy of the survey. We're just going to take out a few pieces of it. Otherwise, we would be here for a very, very long time. So the first thing we kind of asked people, well, what are you using? And these are the actual numbers as opposed to percentages. So each person could answer each question and how much they use single-use plastic bags. So, you know, most people are still using single-use plastic bags. A lot of the people in the survey are, are using reusable bags, which is great. And so that's heartening to know that, that we're kind of on the right track. But there's still a lot, we know that there's a lot of single-use, uh, bag usage. So the next question we thought was important to ask is, well, how are, how concerned are you about the impact of plastic bags in the environment, or plastic waste in the environment? And ninety-one percent said that they're at a level of four or five, which is most concerned. So we got into specific questions. What do we do about it? What would you support us to do? So the first one is prohibit the use of single-use plastic bags for groceries and other shopping. Sixty-four percent said they would support that. Twenty-one not sure, and then fifteen percent would not support. Secondarily, we, we asked, require a fee for single-use plastic paper bags at the store. In somewhat similar response, sixty-five percent said they would support that. Seventeen weren't sure and eighteen percent said they weren't liking the idea. The next question we asked, should we ask, encourage stores and restaurants to use recyclable and sustainable products? And that was a resounding yes. And the same thing goes to prohibit use of Styrofoam food containers for carryout of food. Eighty-five percent supported that as well. Um, we're not pursuing that right now because I think that, um, as we've seen some of, from other bans, sometimes something like that can have unintended consequences. And we know that, uh, food service is having sup, uh, supply issues right now. So that's, that is not something that we are interested in taking on at this point. Restrict, single-use plastic items such as plastic straws, stirs, and utensils. Seventy percent say yes. Uh, encourage restaurants to only include straws, utensils, and condiments if requested. There's an eighty-eight percent yes rate, which is pretty good. Only four percent no. So I think that's a resounding, please do something about this. Emma's going to take, oh, no, Alex is going. Alex is going to take the next section.
Um, so we wanted to just kind of quickly talk about some of the other ordinances and legislation that have been put in place across the country before we get into our proposal. So I'm sure as most of us are aware, there are several states in the country that have initiated plastic bag bans. Um, there are also states that have implemented plastic bans that impose a paper bag fee. Um, as well as several US territories that have also outright banned disposal bags altogether. And hundreds of counties and municipalities across the country that have enacted their own ordinances of either placing a fee on bags or banning them outright. Within Illinois, there are several communities that have implemented single-use bag legislation. And a lot of these are, um, ordinances that we have kind of combed through and used in our proposal. Again, just reiterating, there's a lot of movement and traction on this within the Chicago area. So we're just one of several communities that are looking to do this if we haven't already done it. Um, so as an example, the city of Chicago has implemented a fee. They originally did have a ban and then they, um, weren't really seeing great results. And that's actually, I think in the packet, there's a study that does highlight outright bans don't really seem to do what we want it to do. Fees seem to work better to reduce use of single-use bags. Evanston, again, as an example of that, they had a ban and they're currently reassessing that. Obviously with COVID coming into play, that kind of threw things up in the air as well. And a lot of communities were either pausing it or kind of backtracking what they had done before. Um, Oak Park has a fee and what I thought was really interesting about that is they've seen a drastic decrease in the amount of single-use bags used per month. So they went from one point four million bags per month and decreasing to an average of two hundred thousand bags sold per month. Um, again, Woodstock, another community. And Edwardsville also just recently implemented a fee as well. Um, also to note that the state of Illinois numerous times has talked about, um, a bag fee legislation and for various reasons, it hasn't happened. It was kind of paused again when COVID came up. But we would expect that at some point, this is going to be back up for discussion. And our goal is to try and implement something before it happens at the state level. While the goal of what we're doing is not to collect a revenue from this, if there is going to be a fee collected, it would be great to keep that locally and be able to use that to fund different projects that we'll talk about in a few minutes. As Carolyn mentioned too, in the survey, there is a lot of support for, um, decreasing other single-use plastics. Those would be things like straws and plastic utensils. These are items that just automatically can't be recycled. And there are examples of several states with bans and restrictions on those products as well. Um, including the city of Chicago, they have an ordinance that just encourages establishments to only, um, hand out, uh, foodware and straws upon request. So there's no fee as part of that, but it's just kind of a, um, encouragement to reduce use of that product.
So I'm here to talk about our hope for Batavia and our proposal to enact a ten-cent bag fee per bag. And like we discussed earlier, that would be any single-use bag, so paper or plastic. Four cents of that would be retained by the retailer. Uh, four cents of that would be retained by the city of Batavia for a proposed, um, environmental or sustainability fund that I'll discuss in a minute. Um, and two cents retained for the Kane County environmental programs. So along with the, um, bag fee, we would also like to take the example that Chicago set and, um, have a, you know, other plastics, single-use plastics only available upon request. So things like straws, utensils, stirs, condiments, what you find at restaurants. Um, obviously retailers can use the funds collected at their discretion. For the city of Batavia, we are thinking that we could have something, um, called the Sustainability Fund. And we would use the money for things like recycling education programs to improve our recycling efforts, energy efficiency rebates, street tree plantings, public tree care, refunding the cost of promotional bags. So if the city, um, helped to pay for bags that people could use that were reusable, that this fund could help pay that back. Um, and then also projects to, um, enhance the river. At the county level, the funds could be used for collecting household hazardous waste or for having events that collect that kind of waste, um, as well as other things that are difficult to recycle. So things like consumer electronics or latex paint, textiles, that sort of stuff. Also, we see a need for education at the county and city level about recycling, um, especially when it comes to people accidentally contaminating their recycling and not understanding how to avoid that or why that's so important. And then in addition to that, um, the money could be used to, uh, improve infrastructure for repair and reuse of items, recycling and composting. And in order to get the information out, we have a few ideas. We would publish an information sheet to social media. We would have a press release, um, possibly bag distribution events at local housing communities so that if anyone does not already have a reusable bag, they can get one. Presentation at chamber events. Um, information tables at major retailers in town so people understand what the fee is for and how it will be used. And, um, like we've kind of already mentioned, this is a regional effort. We've been working with the St. Charles Natural Resources Committee. Um, and they're proposing a similar fee in their town. Geneva doesn't have home rules, so they cannot impose a fee like this. But Elgin is working on something similar and Aurora is watching to see what happens in our towns as well. Um, if we are able to make this happen, then we would, uh, be pursuing local support as well. Support in the city of Batavia through the Chamber of Commerce. Local businesses, Batavia Main Street, Boy Scouts and Girl Scout troops, Sierra Club, the League of Women's Voters, HC Storm Green Team, and other groups like this to help us get the word out and distribute reusable bags to people who maybe need them still. And lastly, we just wanted to close with a quote from Woodstock Council member Mike Turner. He said, although we see it as a fee, he said, the tax is the best kind you'll ever have because it's an avoidable tax. It's a tax you don't have to pay. Find a bag, use the bag, don't pay the tax. It's pretty simple. So we see it and we hope that you do too, as a win-win, because it can be avoided. But if you do have to pay it, it helps to support local business and it also helps to support sustainability efforts.
Questions?
Anybody have questions, Mark? I'm just going to recuse myself from the discussion because it affects my business, so. Nice jacket tonight, too.
Does Aldi handle a lot of plastic bags?
Your honor, go ahead.
When this thing originally got the attention, the first time around, it made its way all the way to Channel Seven News. And so that one, when you get on Chicago TV, I will tell you, I'm very impressed by the coverage that you get and the reaction you get because that really drives people's interest. And so the morning after that happened, the phone upstairs in my office rang probably seven times for people to call up and offer an opinion about this. And it wasn't necessarily a negative opinion, but there, what it was, and I think it may have been a group, dog owners were very concerned that we were going to take away their ability to get plastic bags because that's the instrument they use on their nightly walks or morning walks or whatever with their dogs, is that they use the plastic bag. And so they were almost pleading on the phone. I, you know, nobody knew anything about buying it. They just thought there was going to be an outright ban and you wouldn't be able to get a plastic bag. But, uh, you know, in checking with some of my staff, I guess we're of the opinion, we are running at an all-time high in Batavia with dogs. We've never, ever had as many dogs as we now have in Batavia with the number of people who have them. And they're nice dogs and, you know, they're not causing any problem. But the folks really cherish the plastic bag as the way they can solve their problem of picking up the dog's residual as they walk down the sidewalks and the streets. And I admire that because I think that's something as a city we should strive to, you know, continue to see. I'd rather not see the other type of situation where they didn't pick it up. So I just share that. I don't know how that factors into what you're proposing here. But that is a major issue that I think is out there in the neighborhood with folks as far as the plastic bag is used as the tool to deal with the dogs.
I don't know if we have to respond. I'm a dog owner myself and I try really hard not to use plastic bags. But even with trying to not use plastic bags, I still have enough. They accumulate somehow, they multiply. Um, and I still have them. And also you can, I sometimes buy like little rolls too, and they're not super expensive. It's probably, I haven't done the math, but it's probably cheaper than buying the ten-cent bags and using them. But maybe Alex, do you want to weigh in at all either? She, I know she owns dogs too.
No, I think I just, I would just reiterate what Emma said. I am a dog owner. So when I'm walking my dog, I do use plastic bags because it is kind of the easiest and most clean way to pick up after my dog. But yeah, I, I try not to use plastic bags, but I have accumulated them, so I, I do use those. I do buy the rolls. I'll buy like a big kind of box from the store of the rolls and, um...
And I personally don't think they're really very expensive, so that seems to work for me. But yeah.
Nick?
I have a question. And it stems from, this is great, I mean, I would, I support a tax, but I would not relish being the first community around here to do it. I would rather it come from the state level where it's equal than the retailers have an equal. Have you reached out to any of the retailers and what response have you gotten from them?
We have not reached out to any retailers personally. We kind of use the Oak Park example and the Woodstock example of how it's worked for them. But I would, I would suppose that that would be a part of trying to move forward in what this might look like and who it might apply to, that we would have to bring in more resources to find out exactly who this applies to and what it means.
I would be, I, I would caution using Oak Park. I mean, they are overall a cutting-edge town that buys into this, where I wouldn't necessarily compare Batavia to that. I would say it's, you know, with our aging and the retirements coming in and fixed incomes, we don't have the same kind of demographics that they do, but.
I, I think.
So I have concerns with that.
I think, I understand what you're saying about it, but the businesses that this applies to are primarily going to be big box stores that are dealing with this all over the country in another community. So they're already dealing with bag fees, bag bans, you know, Target, you know, Trader Joe's is already going to do that on their own. So they're not going to apply to the small mom and pop shops. If I can say that correctly. And, you know, if you, if you look at the packet that we sent you, I think one of the things that we, we also need to remember is, you know, most people have lots of bags in their home. They can even reuse a plastic bag. So I don't think that this is an unwarranted or onerous fee for most people, because I think most people have them, they've been given them. We can even come up, and that's one of our proposals, if we feel like it's appropriate, is to get people, maybe some local businesses and not the city, to sponsor bags to hand out to people that are low income. So to make sure that they have appropriate bags to bring to the store, and we'll make them fun and interesting so people want the bags.
On the positive side, I agree with you there. I think communication and education around here, I mean, as I was watching the presentation, I'm like, I'm going home and telling my wife, we got to put reusable bags in our cars so we limit it, you know, but I'd rather it be my choice. But the education and communication are key, so I like those aspects of this.
I did want to add just a little bit to what Carolyn was talking about too. So I have a friend who lives in Duluth, Minnesota, and the city of Duluth just also passed a bag fee ordinance, but she was telling me that the community kind of rallied around this and did kind of like take a bag, leave a bag programs. There were also sewing groups that had donated fabric, and they made bags to distribute to community members, to people who needed or wanted reusable bags. So I think, you know, if we decide to pursue this, we can get really creative with programs like that as well to support our community members, so it isn't very onerous and that we're making it as equitable as possible.
Can I, sorry to jump, just one last question for me. You had mentioned this wouldn't apply to mom and pop. Do you differentiate the retailer of who this would apply to and who it doesn't?
Yeah, I think one thing that we don't have laid out in this presentation, but is in the packet, is that depending on which ordinance you look at, some ordinances say any business larger than 5,000 square feet, some say larger than 7,000. So obviously that would have to be all, you know, hammered out, but the smaller shops this wouldn't apply to.
I think the concern is, you know, when you have a different shopping experience in bags than if you go to, say, the Tea Tree, right? Or if you go to Jewel, right? You're bringing one bag home from the Tea Tree, and they're a small business, right? And you could bring home 10 or 15 plastic bags from Jewel because they, you know, you're buying so much stuff there, and that's the case with a lot of the big box stores. So it does make sense to do that. There are some cities that are proposing it, that it'd apply to everyone. The bag bans generally do too, but we're, we think that this will be more effective in building the behavior that we want to reuse bags, which is really the goal, is just like find a way for them to bring their reusable bags. And we've, in all the research that we've seen, about 10 cents seems right. Giving people money back doesn't seem to work. Bans don't seem to work. But in that range, and we pick the 10 cents also because, and I don't want to shortchange Batavia, because I think Batavia is pretty progressive. I believe that. We have the most support for a lot of the things that we had in the survey, but I can't even remember where I'm going with that. But in, in the, in the bag fee, I think that that's kind of the sweet spot, that that's what Elgin's looking at. That's what Northbrook's looking at a fee too. St. Charles is going to propose the same thing, so it can be the same, so people know what to expect wherever they go. And, and we can't, I would love the state to do it. That's what I kept saying, I want the state to do this. Why isn't the state doing it? But sometimes you have to start locally and it has to go up. And that's why we think it's really important to start here.
Abby?
I, well, I was going to ask you to go back to the proposal slide because I couldn't remember if the square footage question or that was listed on there or not and who it would apply to or not. And then the other comment I was going to say is that in the ordinances that have been proposed by the state, like they mentioned, there's a grandfather date that's moved with, with the proposed legislation up with it, that municipalities that pass something by a certain date would be grandfathered in. We get to, you know, keep our fees, they wouldn't go to the state. And I think the more and more cities that adopt this, the state, I would imagine the state will see the revenue source draining and pass it quicker than they are getting to it now. And I agree with Carolyn. I think there's a lot of room for Batavia to be a leader in general and to take the lead on some of these. We're certainly in step with the surrounding communities, all looking at this too. The survey data shows that people are generally responsive to this. This is not something that our kids are going to find weird, just like our grandparents didn't find it weird. There is a, just a weird window in time where plastic bags became a norm, where our grandparents never used them, our kids won't use them. It's not Aldi-proof, behaviors can be modified if asked to. And I don't want to put you on the spot, Mark, but how big is Aldi? Is the Aldi store in Batavia? Like for reference, how many square feet is Aldi? It's about 14,000. Okay. So they'd qualify, not that they have a problem with plastic bags. Berkeley's the same way. We can be trained and we can be okay with slight modifications to habits.
I did, I brought a visual aid here. These are my bags, and it seems, it seems kind of strange to show you my bags. Why am I showing you my bags, right? It's because I've taken these bags to the grocery store since 2013, so I'm guessing these bags have seen over 400 uses. And in some of the research, they say, well, you have to use something 100 times or 130 times to equal plastic. Well, you know, for those of us that go to the grocery store every week, that, that goes pretty quick, and if it's a decent bag, it's going to last. And now I keep it in my car, I bring it every week. You know, during the pandemic, it was frightful going to stores and coming back with all those bags. So it's, it's been a big savings doing that, and I know other people can do it.
Jen?
Just one thing to touch upon. With this ordinance, it kind of hits one of the goals for the Greenest Region Compact that we all agreed to a year ago and that we're looking to pursue. It's actually goal, let's try to find it. Gold W. WR4 and, oh, that's not it. WR20. So that's one of the goals that this goes on with that. And to piggyback off of what Abby said, we have a large retailer that is already doing this. They charge for bags, and you don't see people fussing about it at the store. People are just trained to either purchase them and they pay the fee, grab a box, or bring their own items there.
Leah, go ahead.
And off of what Jen says, Aldi's one of the most affordable places to shop at in Batavia, so people who already might need to find the best price for produce and meat are going there and providing their own bags or using whatever resources they have and not relying on stores for, to provide that for them. I also agree with Abby and with the Environmental Commission that I think Batavia's ready for this, and we are an outdoorsy, green community, and I think a lot of people would be excited about this opportunity. I think we can be leaders in the Fox Valley, not only in this, but in lots of different areas for us to move forward, to support, to support our communities in areas like this. So I think it's exciting, and I think it's something that we should definitely consider.
I guess my comment would be, the only thing that I want to know is who's administering it? How are we collecting it? Is it on the businesses to report, similar to the way we do the gas tax? You know, what are we going to use as a metric to know that we're collecting the right amounts and that the stores are collecting the right amounts so we can keep track of that? And also I think this is one of those that I hope it ends up failing, that we don't raise money from it, that people just don't buy the bags. And that's what I think the goal is with this, is to get to that point where maybe at the first, the beginning of this, it raises a lot of money, we get to do some things with it, but then eventually that dollar value tapers off and goes away so people aren't buying the bags.
Yeah, the goal is absolutely zero.
Right. And, and that's something that I think we need to talk about because I think the public needs to be aware that that's where we want to be, is that we want that to go away and everybody to use those bags. I mean, I think of the things I do and the looks I get when I walk into even Home Depot or Menards or something, no, I don't want a bag, I'm just going to carry out what I bought because I don't want another bag, you know? And how often it is when I go through the bags that we have, and I'm like, where did this other bag of bags come from? You know, to get rid of these. And then you think about when you do come home with five in each hand when you walk out of any store, and that's how we end up with all of the plastic.
So would you direct staff to work with Batavia Environmental Commission to come up with perhaps a draft ordinance for you to take a look at and then also do the investigation of how the fee is administered from the standpoint of, is it just the honor system with the retailers to tell us how many bags they charge people for, or whether there is some more exact mechanism in order to determine how to collect the fees? Because I'm not sure.
Right.
How we would do that.
And right up front, I just kind of would like to know that because it's not like we have, you know, 100 places we're going to get that from. But there has to be some time spent in it, who's, what staff's going to be responsible for that? What, are we asking businesses to do? How much time are we asking them to spend to create some kind of document or some justification for what they're paying or not paying? I think that those are some of the questions that I have in it. I know we don't have full council here tonight, but I think we've got support for this. That's my feeling, and from the public side of it, I think we've got that support. You know, when you, when you go to things that happen in town, that the farmer's market every Saturday, and you look at how many people walk through there, no, I don't need a plastic bag for my vegetables, just throw them in on top of everything else in my bag that I got here.
Because so many bring their own bags anyways.
Right. You know, and that's the reality of it, and I think that carries over then when you've got that bag in the car all the time, that you just take it with you when you know you can use it.
So could I propose that since we are potentially going to have two council meetings that we don't have on the 14th and the 21st, I'm imagining that the 28th might be a pretty, you know, sizable agenda? And then the following meeting is going to be another city council meeting that happens on a Tuesday night because of the July 4th holiday? So that the next time that we would bring this back would be potentially the second Tuesday in July?
I think that's fine.
And that gives you a time to do some of the research and see what some of the other communities are doing.
Yeah, how they administer it, who's responsible for it? Is it somebody in their utility billing department that does it? You know, how, how we would do that internally? Because I think that's questions we have to think about so we don't create something and then all of a sudden have to figure out, okay, who's going to do this?
When is St. Charles doing their presentation? Isn't it soon too?
I know that it was soon, but I don't know when. They're slightly different schedule for meetings. I know if, if you look at the, the sample ordinances that we, I sent out in the email yesterday.
I can check with St. Charles.
Yeah, I thought he'd mentioned that they had given the presentation.
I know he spoke at one of their city council meetings.
Oh, there was definitely a presentation given to their city council. I don't know that they've brought it back to consider an ordinance.
That was their kind of the annual report.
People asked them about it, and they weren't presenting it yet, which is how it got picked up in the news and how it got taken before anybody actually had a formal presentation written.
Gotcha.
That's how that worked.
Okay.
I have another question too, though, in terms of information you might want to add, because so is it going to be 7,000 or 10,000 square feet?
That would be determined by the research we do here.
5,000. So I think that's important too, is what are the businesses this would even apply to? I mean, how many businesses are 10,000 square feet bigger in Batavia that use plastic bags?
And I think, I think that's where staff comes in because we, we need to get that data from staff.
Yeah, I mean, we could just be all across the board for all businesses. I mean, we could come up with that decision on that or take more of a stepped phased approach like, you know, this year, let's see how it goes for this square feet of businesses and then maybe reevaluate it and, you know, shrink it down and get that feedback.
Tony, did you want to say something?
Yes, thank you, Alan. Yeah, I, I fully support this. My daughter's banned bags in our house about 10 years ago, and it's been, been successful. A couple of comments on, on some of the discussion. Mary, you raised the concern that people had contacted you about dog bags. I would point out, you can buy biodegradable pipe-based dog bags online. I would imagine you'd probably buy them at some pet stores. In terms of, Nick, your concerns with, with, you know, Batavia being first and what this could do to businesses, I don't see this as driving business away from Batavia to save 10 cents on a bag. In fact, I see it as a savings for some of our businesses because bags are an expense that they, they pay for. They wouldn't have to pay for them where they could offset the pay with their portion that they would receive. I think Batavia's a prime town for this. We are the home of Aldi, and Aldi's been doing this for decades in charging bags. I think they're, they're a leader. And Mary, also remember when Berkeley did this, you know, they, on their own decided they were not going to give out plastic bags anymore and offer boxes or pay for paper bags. You were getting phone calls then. I imagine those had died down and, and, you know, there wasn't a big hurt to, or loss of business there. So I just want to say that I fully support this, and I think there's some, some huge opportunities. One thing that would, does concern me, which I see a lot, gas stations that are, not necessary gas station, but convenience stores. Someone will buy, come in and buy a can of pop in a candy bar, and they'll have it in a bag, probably for a matter of minutes. And I would, I would think we should address that as well, not, and not just say, well, it's got, got to be 10,000 or 7,000 square feet. I think if we're going to have a ban and we want to stop use, we, we can do it. I would be supportive of a, of a program to end the use of single plastics in Batavia. Thanks.
Can I respond?
Nick?
Yeah, Tony, good points. I just wanted to say.
I just wanted to say, when, when my points, I wasn't arguing for one way or the other. I didn't want to make the mistake, like you making the assumption that Berkeley's business isn't worse. I don't know what their numbers are, it could have hurt them, we don't know. Um, I would like to hear from the stakeholders, the businesses that would be affected by this, um, what their thoughts are and what their concerns are, uh, as well. I don't want to make any assumptions that this, all of behaviors for this, um, you know, that, that's, I just, let's get the information and, and, and do it the right way.
Staff will make sure that we communicate about that with, um, stakeholder groups when the, um, draft ordinance comes back, that people have an opportunity to weigh in and present their, uh, opinion on how that might affect, um, them personally.
And definitely reach out through Main Street and Chamber so that way we get some feedback from them on how they would handle that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, and more than just, you know, going to 10 of them on the Randall Road strip, but be able to ask them to specifically try to ask some of the smaller businesses how they would handle that if they got, you know, if that change was presented to them.
Okay.
Yeah?
Um, so current businesses that already have this model and are already, um, have their fees set up, would they get grandfathered in with their own? Would they stay doing their own thing like Berkeley and Aldi?
Well, Berkeley's doing bags and they're not charging.
They're not charging?
They're waiting for us to put out the ordinance to begin charging for it.
Berkeley's not charging?
No. I would think that that would be fair to grandfather them in. Be interested to know what Aldi has done and other, obviously they have a presence in places that have already enacted ban. I would assume they get grandfathered in.
Do we know anybody at all?
Do we know anybody that might answer all the questions?
You know, answer those questions?
Not anyone in this discussion.
No.
I mean, with Aldi being, it, their headquarters in our community and they are one of the fastest growing supermarkets in the United States, it's almost like we need to piggyback off of them, of what they're doing and support their initiatives.
Because I know there has been, and I won't get the scenario or the anecdote right. I know there has been pushback from Target in other cities where this has been enacted. Um, I don't remember when it was or where it was or what the outcome was. I assume that it was passed, you know, but they have, they have pushed back in other places.
But I wonder if some of that has changed with the energy?
Yeah.
Everybody going green and putting those initiatives in at their office, being sustainable.
And at first it might have been fair. It would be interesting to see the results that have come from the communities that have enacted it. I mean, but I'd rather react on those facts than on anecdotal theories that us nine have sitting here.
Okay, well, I think we've got direction to go with and we'll get some information and then get an ordinance back in front so we'll make some decisions on sizes on who's within the ordinance and who's not and then move forward with it. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm stepping out for the next one, Alan.
Okay, and Mark stepping back in.
It's Warren.
You're it. Okay, up next is item seven, uh, an approval on a Class A liquor license application for Sturdy Shelter Brewing LLC located at 10 Shumway.
So moved.
And let's see, Dan is not here. I'll just take it.
He's on, uh.
Or is Dan?
He's online, I think.
Dan is online? I didn't think he was.
Yes, he is.
Oh, he's on now. We don't have them back up there, so I can't see. Chief Dan is here, but it's. Yeah, I'll be very happy when I don't have to try to manage a screen and a room.
It's multitasking.
You're talking Dan Yule, not Dan Chansett. This is government service.
Yeah, I don't think Dan Chansett's on.
Okay, so we have Sturdy Shelter Brewing here and, uh, they have an application pending for, uh, Class A liquor license. Um, as you may know from other times that, uh, we've had Frank here telling us about his business. They're opening a craft brewery on, uh, Shumway Avenue. They're right in the heat of doing their, their build out right now, see things happening there every day. Um, and as part of their business plan, in addition to, um, serving their beer, they are also intending to serve wine. And we don't have a mechanism under our current liquor code where, uh, people can obtain two, uh, different types of liquor license. And so under our code, it makes more, most sense because there is the anticipation that, um, they would also occasionally be serving food, that that falls more under our tavern, um, license than under our craft brewery license. And so that is why you see this business applying for a Class A license as opposed to the Class H license. Um, Chief Yule, do you have anything to add?
No, that's an accurate summary.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yeah, I don't have anything to add. I have no problems with this, but I'm going to suggest that before we write this ordinance, maybe we need to call the folks at the movie theater down here because they've indicated to me they're coming for a liquor license.
Oh, we already have a provision under our liquor license, um, that they can apply for the entertainment venue.
Yeah, but I'm not sure that that's going to cover everything that they want to do there.
And we're not changing the liquor code tonight, it's one business is applying for an A license.
You know, but, but he's talking about here, I think there could be some roll over into the theater thing. And the theater thing where, is the theater out there is really going to town. They're going to tear the whole back wall of the building off and put in the biggest screen in the state of Illinois out there. So, and they've got, one of the things they are looking for is a license for both having a restaurant and a bar. And they're going to serve liquor in the movie theater at movies. They're going to have waitresses at the door greeting you and when you sit down, they'll take your order and supposedly they'll serve you and then the lights will go out and they'll show the movie and then in the middle of the movie, they turn, turn the movie out and intermission the thing. And then they come back out and see if you want another or whatever you're doing. I mean, they've got some pretty involved ideas out there and I'm just thinking if we're going to play with the ordinance for them, but.
No, we are not.
We're not changing ordinance.
We are not changing the ordinance. They're applying for something that already exists under our ordinance with the, which is the, uh, Class A liquor license.
How about if they wanted to serve food, is that?
It's covered under there, so our taverns can serve food as well.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying that I think we'll be back here having another discussion in the near term with movie theater. Because last week they talked to Scott and I three times, so they're, they're definitely very interested in doing something.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
Question, uh, is there a cost difference for the application?
Um, I think it's a $200, right? It's $1,300 for the Class H license and it's $1,500 for the, um, Class A license. But the Class A license also offers you the opportunity to have the adjunct outdoor service license that is another thing that will be added in the future as well as the packaged liquor. So the purchase to take away, it has a lot more flexibility.
Okay, perfect. So he's not paying for two licenses, he's paying for the difference?
No, he's paying for just the one license, which is $200 more expensive than the Class H, which is restricted compared to. We have issued an H to Energy City Brewing, however, they have recently, um, come back and asked us, they are wanting to do service outside and so we may need to, um, do a text amendment that would allow them to do that.
Frank hasn't already got the H license.
No, he has not. This is the first license that he's applying for.
I just want to make sure we're not charging them for two. If they had already gotten one and decided they needed to get the other, then we change.
We wouldn't do that to Frank.
Make sure this is all clear in my mind.
Frank, I promise I'll make up that 200.
All right.
I know, I was looking at the menu already and I'm like, um.
The first night the council leaves the meeting here and has to go to your place, we'll take care of that.
We'll have a place for you.
Yeah. Now, we have to have, let somebody in there from the press so that way we're all good. So they can tell we didn't talk about city business. We know how to, how to operate.
Yeah, I think the, uh, I think that, that Class A license also includes live entertainment. I think that falls under it too. So it really is a, is a kind of a catch-all. We're going to be a, um, Class Three state license, which allows you to, a certain amount of self-distribution along with, um, taproom and it, it also allows you to serve other things apart from beer. So it fits into our state license while the tavern license here, uh, in the city.
Anybody else have any questions? Got an opening date yet?
Well, we're, I'm afraid to say, uh, because, uh, everyone will say, I thought you said it'd be open. We're, we're hoping at the end of August.
Okay.
We're hoping.
That's great. If you need any testers.
Yes.
Let us know.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, um, no other questions? I'll make the motion that, uh, we approve a Class A liquor license for Sturdy Shelter Brewing LLC located at 10 Shumway Avenue.
Second?
Motion by Wolf, second by Uwer. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Yasi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller absent, Rosado?
Aye.
Beck absent, Connolly absent, Chansett absent, and Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 10 to 0.
Okay. And Sarah, what time did you join the meeting? We didn't have the full screen up here, so I didn't see when you joined, you know?
It was seven, it was, uh, 7:02. I was having some technical difficulties.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to make sure the record's correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yep, we will. All right, up next is item number eight, Resolution 2263R, Illinois Municipal League, TIF ordinance support of TIF as a local economic development tool.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm before you this evening with a draft of model legislation from the Illinois Municipal League. They reached out to member organizations this spring. Um, as you're probably aware, every once in a while, there's some proposed legislation that comes down the pipeline that may impact local municipalities' ability to use the TIF tax increment financing tool, um, as, as it is currently laid out in the state statutes. Uh, most recently, one of the, um, proposed state bills was 2298 coming out of Arlington Heights with, um, some proposed deleterious, um, reduction of the blight criteria that, that could pose some challenges as well as, um, giving the joint review boards some veto-like power. And, um, the Illinois Municipal League, the American Planning Association, Illinois Chapter, um, and many, many municipalities, uh, reviewed the legislation and, um, reached out and, you know, asked for, for it not to be passed. Um, we heard back in April that the proposed amendment was quashed for the time being, but again, this is, this is, um, the type of thing that seems to come up every year or two. Um, so IML has asked its member communities to consider adopting this model, uh, resolution in support of TIF as it's currently laid out in state statute so that it retains its effectiveness as a local economic development tool. And I'm before you this evening to answer any questions and unless, I don't know, Laura, if you have anything to add.
The only thing that I would add is I thought perhaps the most egregious part of the proposed legislation were the, uh, reduction of the time period for TIF. So whereas TIF is typically a 23-year period, um, and there is the ability under certain circumstances to get a 12-year extension, the, uh, legislation proposed that that be reduced to only 10 years, a TIF of 10 years with an extension of five years. Now, we know from our great deal of experience with what a mixed-use development project entails that the number of years it takes even to get to the redevelopment agreement stage burns perhaps a couple of years off of the TIF time period. And then if you're issuing bonds, those are typically issued for a 20-year period. And so having only 10 years really handcuffs this as a, a potential for, uh, economic incentive. And it would really, you know, cut it off at the knees. Frankly, I don't see many circumstances in which it would be a useful economic tool for us anymore. Um, I, so I just leave it at that. That was probably the, the worst part of it.
Yeah, I think that would be really tough to ever even think about issuing bonds or getting.
We wouldn't.
Somebody to agree to that when you don't have that much of a TIF to repay them with.
Right.
You know, because then you're truly committing tax dollars back to it out of the general fund or some other source. So, yeah, I think this is something we definitely should do. Anybody have any comments? Abby?
What was the background on it? So what was the, what was their reasoning for making these changes?
It is, um, the, the particular legislator who is the sponsor of it, uh, is, as Shannon mentioned, from Arlington Heights. And, um, similar to city of Chicago, they have had some experience with, um, areas of TIF that haven't seen any redevelopment, like any major project, but have been locked up for 50 years. And so I think that that was, and, and a lot of this legislation comes from examples in the city of Chicago where you would look at an area and say, that's not really, seemed to satisfy the criteria for blight and that there has been abuse, um, in several instances. As opposed to, you look at the city of Batavia and the things that it has done with TIF. And our very first TIF was taking a horribly environmentally contaminated industrial area on Water Street and turned it into the beautiful residential properties that you see over there. And from the success of that, being able to utilize the TIF revenue that was generated in order to, well, not only create $700,000 in additional, uh, future revenue from property taxes for the school district and all the other taxing bodies, but also to utilize that funding in order to do the streetscape projects on Houston Street, Wilson Street, and to create the woo-nurf that exists on North River Street that have really changed the face of our downtown and, and made us a destination for people to, uh, bring their businesses here and for other developers to see us as a, um, you know, a place to be.
I can't imagine what they're proposing would spot, would help any big projects. And I think whatever Arlington Heights and the city of Chicago, that's the problem in city council.
I think there are some Chicago Bears in the middle of this.
Yeah, I don't think that Arlington Heights is going to give up. I, I don't think that this is going to get pushed really hard again because with the possibility of the Bears moving out there, they're going to need all the help they can get.
Right.
To do it and if they don't have TIF or state assistance, it's, it's never helping. Well, yeah, Chicago will never help with that. But, you know, the, the reality of the space that they have, they want to develop. I can't imagine that he's going to come back and sponsor this again.
Right.
Or push really hard to get this passed and then reduce to 10 years. That makes no sense at all.
Yeah. Could this sponsor not want the Bears out there because?
Her, her opposition to TIF predates even a whisper of the Bears going to Arlington Heights.
This goes back, I mean, even to the beginning when I got in city council, there was talk of TIF being reduced because of some of the abuses that were happening in Chicago with it. I, I think it's fine. I think it's something that we should do. I think it's something we should pass and, and send off.
I support it, but it, it's something to always keep in mind, uh, as we present it, the options to us, that there are rules and there's a good way to invest with TIF and there's a bad way to invest in, in TIF, so.
Be a good example.
But I'd rather it be our decision and, uh, states.
I don't have any opposition to it. Um, I would make the. Um, I would, uh, make the motion that we, uh, send to Council Resolution 2263R, the IML Model Tiff Ordinance in support of Tiff as a local economic development tool.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Rosado. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Yasi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller absent. Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly absent, Chancet absent, and Sofa.
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to zero.
All right, thank you. All right, then moving on to item nine is Ordinance 2231, amending Title III of the City Code to revise business license requirements and clarify the business registration process. Shannon?
Thank you. I'm going to go against one of my pet peeves and read from the memo, so bear with me, but I really want everyone at home, um, to get the information and make sure that we don't miss anything, because this is a important discussion. So, the proposed text amendment to the City Council, to the City Code is before council for several reasons. Despite some language in the code referencing the city's ability to license businesses, no formal program has existed outside of specialty licensing for items such as liquor, massage, video gaming, vending, tobacco, et cetera. While the underlying verbiage seems to indicate that more general business licensing may have been intended, the process is not explicitly clear, and there's no evidence that a formal licensing program was ever utilized by the city. Further, the use of the term "license" has been challenged in other localities and may limit the city's ability to require documentation of businesses that operate in Batavia that are also subject to the licensing requirements of the state or federal government. For this reason, many municipalities have moved away from the licensing terminology in order to adopt business registration processes, which are less problematic from a, a legal standpoint. City Council has considered the implementation of a more formal business registration process for a number of years, with some discussion going back, uh, to 2016. Two situations in particular have prompted the interest in establishing the business registration program. The first was the Sterigenics incident in Willowbrook, Illinois, where the city was not aware of chemical processes that were then alleged to have caused serious health concerns to residents. A business registration process would put the city on notice of what type of businesses are being operated, so that any zoning, safety, or other concerns could be addressed in a timely manner. The second situation was during the COVID-19 pandemic, which brought the importance of the need for such programming to the forefront. It was challenging to communicate with businesses, particularly during the earliest days of the pandemic, when connecting to our business community was most crucial, as they experienced the challenges of closures related to shelter-in-place orders, pivoting to different service-delivery models, and the economic and operational strain that entailed. Had the city had a business registration program in place, it would have been easier to communicate information and details on available resources in the most timely manner possible. For example, email blasts could have been sent to all registered businesses each time the city learned about grants for, uh, PPE, personal protective equipment, or money is available for essential services, service businesses, or similar. Additionally, one of the biggest struggles that comes along with not having such a program in place is that at any given time, it is difficult to have a snapshot of who is currently operating in town. From a business retention and recruitment standpoint, it's invaluable to understand what businesses are coming and going, what is the current mix of businesses, and how that has changed over time, and what upcoming trends or issues may impact our business community. The proposed business registration will allow the city to formalize efforts to stay connected to our business community and ensure that the data we have is always up to date. It will give us key contact information for each place of business, to help build relationships, notify the appropriate party in case of emergency, and to share information on applicable resources. The attached ordinance was drafted with the intention of giving our business community time to learn about the business registration program and incentivize early registrants. We understand this is a new program, and while full compliance is ultimately the goal of the city and the obligation of those doing business in town, we have the opportunity to ease the businesses into it. The ordinance before you proposes that all businesses must register for the first time, no later than January 1st, 2023, with an annual fee of $50. This fee would be solely to offset the costs for collecting and processing application information. It is not intended, and it cannot be, a revenue source for the city. However, in order to incentivize early adoption of the new program, staff proposes that any registrations that are issued prior to December 31st of this year would not incur a fee, and also would be valid for the entirety of 2023, expiring December 31st of 2023. It is the hope that this no-fee period would give our businesses time to plan for and adjust to the new requirements. Finally, it should be noted that the absence of a local business registration program is not necessarily a competitive advantage and will not dissuade businesses from choosing to operate in the City of Batavia. Staff receives calls from nearly every potential business asking for our license or registration requirements, because they're accustomed to obtaining them in other localities. The majority of metropolitan communities have some sort of program in place. Some King County municipalities have a similar program, and others that historically have not are either recently putting them in place or are contemplating it. The advantages of such a program seem to significantly outweigh the potential perception of inconvenience. Staff tonight is looking for your feedback on the proposed ordinance. We also have Roman, our legal counsel, available, um, to help answer any questions. The, um, attorneys have fully reviewed and vetted and participated in the drafting of the document that's before you. And, um, we have a few options here. Uh, you could consider adopting Ordinance 2231 on a subsequent City Council meeting, uh, to formalize the registration process. You could direct staff to proceed with another alternative or take no formal action at this time. Um, we don't anticipate that there would be a, uh, staff impact in rolling the program out, although there will be a little bit of a learning curve. We don't think any additional staff would be necessary, um, to operate the program. And again, the, um, fee is just intended to cover the cost of it. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, first hand, on this?
Can I add just a few tidbits of information? Um, we use a system called LAMA to, um, collect all of the information concerning, um, development projects, permitting, um, people who are applying for special event permits. It, it really is the repository of all, uh, community economic development information. And we have uploaded information that we know about existing businesses, which should be, make it a little bit easier for people when they do their registrate, registration. Hopefully, they're just kind of updating information that already exists in there, so that there won't be an onerous burden on them to, you know, fill out 45 fields of, of information. So I just wanted to, to share that, that we have been doing some homework, trying to make this as easy of a online process as possible, and I can see that Scott would like to add something to that.
Yeah, and, and I just wanted to emphasize that, uh, I haven't used any of these in a while, it's kind of loud, so. Um, the, uh, we would try to be doing this primarily as an online system to make it easier for everybody, um, that there would be, similar to some of our online permitting, that, uh, it would be an online system, that, you know, they would punch in their information and, you know, that would be processing would be easier for staff, would be easier for the applicants. Um, there will be a paper option, obviously, for people that, you know, are not savvy, but, you know, we would be really significantly encouraging them to do it online.
And lastly, I'd just say that, um, in about 2017, after I joined the city, I really, um, wanted to push for this. There's been a lot of legwork necessary to get this in place, but one, um, news story that I found particularly disturbing was what happened in Willowbrook with Sterigenics, and that, um, that community had no idea of the chemical processing that was going on within, uh, that facility in their community, um, which led to many, uh, lawsuits by residents who feel that they, um, uh, developed, and at times fatal illnesses based upon that. And so we would really like to have that information about, um, what types of businesses that we have in the community for that safety reason, as well as all of the numerous, um, uh, other reasons that Shannon put forth in her memo.
Well, just, I just wanted to question that one. I'm, I'm not familiar with what happened in Willowbrook, but does this, uh, I mean, how in-depth does this go? Do we understand every aspect and every ingredient that's going into a building?
So there are, is, um, SIC and NAICS code for every different type of business that exists, and, um, that is one of the pieces of information that we receive that would let us know, um, what type of chemical processes, um, or that chemical processes are happening there, and that would assist our fire department to know about those things, so that we would have as part of an incoming business, we wouldn't have to wait until the first time that the fire department gets to that particular address in a two-year rotation of doing onsite inspections of businesses. You know, how much time would have gone by before we would learn that there's a certain chemical process that's happening at that location? The fire department would know that as they applied for their business, uh, registration every year.
Do we know what every community around us is doing in this regard?
Um, I believe that Anthony had done a survey a couple of years back about those communities that have, uh, business registration and those that don't, but we could certainly do, provide you, um, as we bring the, the, uh, resolution back in the future, or the ordinance back in the future, we could provide you with a survey of who does and who doesn't.
I can tell you for sure that our, um, North Aurora does have a business registration process.
And West Chicago does as well.
I believe they do as well, and then some of our communities to the north that, um, do not currently are kind of exploring it right now as well.
Uh, and then, well, mildly concerned, while your statement towards the end was the advantages outweigh the perceived pain in the butt this will be, um, I don't know if the businesses will see it that way. The advantages are to us. I don't know if they'll see it that way, and have you run this by the Chamber and Main Street and gotten...
Yes, as a matter of fact, the Chamber is very interested in us implementing this, because they would like to know what new businesses are coming into our community as well, so that they can share with them the, um, services.
Sell them, sell them, uh, so.
That are provided. So organizations like that are very much in favor of us doing that, and, and really from the communication standpoint. Um, at the beginning of COVID, those two organizations came to us and said, great, can we have the list of all of our restaurants in the City of Batavia? And I said, uh, Yellow Pages? I, I mean, that's, that's the best that I would be able to do for them, because we do not have business registration.
I think that, to me, is important, a- as, as much as it is, as do we have a chemical processing plant in a building we didn't know about? Do we have lithium battery storage in a building that we don't know about? You know, what, what's actually in those businesses? And I think that, to me, is really important, and I think from a business standpoint, like with the Chamber or Main Street, it would be really good for them to know that as well, because then maybe you can get two businesses that can use each other, and maybe one can supply the other with something that they don't have to go to another state or another municipality to buy it, if there's somebody on the other side of the industrial park that they never knew was there, that supplies the type of material they need. So, I mean, I think that could be beneficial, and I think there's ways to, you know, not just say perceived benefit, but there's actual benefit to that.
So we're gonna produce a catalog for these businesses to...
Yeah.
No, but we can provide information if you're planning to, um, come to our city and you're looking for, as, as Alan was saying, a type of supplier. Do you have suppliers that supply these types of goods? We can say we've got eight businesses in Batavia that supply those types of goods. You know, the flip side of that, um, can also be whether they hear we have a low, uh, penetration in a certain industry that they are in, that, oh, well, that, that makes Batavia look like a very good place to locate our business that's in that industry.
It's also useful for people that, you know, want to use somebody local, you know, for a contract or whatever, and, you know, we can't make recommendations on individual, you know, we know people, but then at least we can run off a list and say, okay, here's all the people that are doing X business in town, if you want to do that. Um, the other thing it does help us is, is from a zoning perspective, is that, you know, a lot of times we have people that ask if we require business registration, and they said, no, and we say, no, and they're like, there's a 30-second pause where they say, well, what do you mean? And we, we don't require, so it's unusual for a lot of these. But it also will head off at the pass, a lot of these zoning issues that we've had periodically, where somebody moves into a business, they sign a li- lease with the landlord, and all of a sudden, they move in, and we're like, well, wait a minute, you can't be there, because the zoning doesn't meet the requirements. Like, well, that's not what the landlord told me, and like, well.
It's the realtor that you usually blame it on.
There, there is another advantage too, um, especially after COVID, staff has seen grants become available for target populations, minority groups, minority groups, um, and diverse populations, and because we're a community that prides itself on our diversity, you know, we're at the staff level kind of contemplating maybe how to build in some demographic information into the form, so that if Decio contacts us, we're able to share directly with applicable businesses, you know, possible funding opportunities that otherwise might kind of get lost in the shuffle, because we'd be blasting them out to the entire, you know, community of business.
I feel this is another conversation I can't be a part of, because this will either cost or save my, the company I work for. I'm charged with saving. I, I know it's nominal, but I'm charged with saving, I mean, we seriously track things, and when we save pennies, we're like, hey, that's cool. So I'd rather, like, not be part of the discussion, just from a, I'm not comfortable being part of a discussion.
Would that be anybody that has a business in Batavia that qualifies?
Which is basically half of council.
Yeah. Like, you're not personally getting any revenue or cost off of this.
I'm not, but I'm, every, we have a cost-conscious culture.
Roman's here.
So I would not, either way, I wouldn't vote. I would abstain if nothing else, but it's, I can't be put in that position.
Yes.
Um, would this replace any of the current licensing requirements? And I was trying to find the list, and I thought I found it, now I can't. But it's liquor licenses, tattoo parlors, massage parlors. There's a few others that we do, like bowling alley or arcade, or one of those.
Not, not actively, we don't have those in place. No, those, those are more licensing programs, um, so those, you know, have more of a formal review with the police department, with community development, um, you know, with background checks and things like that. So those are actually licensing programs as opposed to registration.
So it wouldn't replace anything that we already have?
Right.
It would not.
And that's, I think, one of the reasons why it's changed to registration. I know when we had this discussion at least a decade ago about this, that was one of the questions that came up, was if this is licensing, it's really not licensing, because we're not licensing them to allow them to do anything or anything else, and that's kind of why it died when we talked about it, yeah, I'd say at le- at least a decade ago. And that was one of the things, when this came back up again, I went back through and, and did another search and read a few of the things that I had read before, and that's really what this is about, is registration, to know what's here, to know, you know, or to try to know what's needed or what's available for resources within our business community, and then be able to use that to develop more. You know, and that's Shannon's job, is to take that information and to go out, find grants for them, find other businesses that fit into that, you know, and make that stuff work. So I think this is, in my mind, really important, and I'm sure it's not gonna be 100% accepted by the, the whole business community, but the reality is, is after we have that and have that data and can use that, there's all kinds of things that can happen with it. You know, and I think the majority of all of it that I see is good.
Yeah, I think, I think the recruitment is definitely one of the things that we would look at, because, you know, we can have an idea of certain businesses, but, you know, when you get into industrial parks in particular, you know, it's, it's harder to tell exactly what some of these businesses do and what, what things we're missing. I mean, we know we have chicken, gas, and grocery on Randall. I mean, that's, that's a given, you know, we know we have all that, so, but, you know, are there other things that we have that aren't in that vein that we could be trying to attract to our area? to attract to our area?
How many mattress stores do we actually have?
It's less than it used to be because they closed one of the, yeah, it's not as many.
That's just the typical joke.
Yes.
How many businesses of what type we have?
And mattresses, sorry.
Yeah.
Anybody online have any comments on this?
I don't see any hands raised.
Sarah Boglissinger.
Oh, there's a hand.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Aye. I had raised my hand earlier, but Alder Menwolf actually said a lot of exactly what I was thinking. I think this sounds like overall a good thing for businesses, if it's going to be used to, you know, create more avenues for resources and things that are available, and just general knowledge for us and how to help businesses interact with each other and utilize each other and when possible. So overall, I do think, I agree that this sounds like a good thing.
Okay. Now we can see the hand.
Alan.
Leah.
Be the advice of you or legal counsel for those of us directly connected to businesses in Batavia to sit out of this vote?
Roman, do you want to address that?
I'll just speak up, that's all right. So, since it's better applied to everybody equally, there's no need to, anybody to purposely abstain from this discussion entirely because it's across the board, that it provides to any particular area or industry or environment that. But of course, too, if at any point you feel comfortable participating in the conversation because of potential issues or conflicts you may be worried about, you're free to personally abstain, but it's not...
I would welcome you guys in. I mean, the council's made up of people in the community for that reason, so we get different opinions. So, I mean, a small business owner, I'd like to hear what you think of this, because that's what's, my concern is based on.
Well, then, I will share. No. Completely, like, the, the fee, I have no concerns one way or the other about, but being able to get direct communication about things like that happened during COVID that would be shared with the entire business community, I think, is very wise. Because sometimes, as business owners, you know there's resources out there and you're just trying to find it, or you're trying to, you know, it's, it's up to all the individual businesses to do the hard work to come to you, when you can just be, like, sending out one big email about something, or, so I think it's, it's a good idea.
Okay. I, I think it's something that we should do. I think it's something that, you know, if we, especially with roughly six months of time to be able to allow all the businesses to do that with, you know, email blasts, you know, I don't know how, do we want to go with Main Street and the Chamber and everybody we can to try to get this out to every business that we can, to try to make sure that they're all aware of this, and, and that way, again, this is one of those things that, if it doesn't generate a dollar, because everybody registers before the deadline, I'd be happy with that. Because that's not, we're not here to make money with it, we're here to try to help our business community and to grow our business community. So that's, I think, to me, the benefit of it would be great if we got it all done by the end of the year and nobody paid for it.
The first year. Ongoing, there will be the $50, but that is to defray the costs of ongoing administration of the program, because, let's face it, people aren't going to be 100% compliant, and we're going to have to chase after those who aren't responding, and there will be that.
And somebody's going to have to do that and figure out how to, you know, get our GPS or, you know, GIS system hooked into it, so that all the stuff that the fire department has for all the keys, boxes, everything that they have is all part of this.
Exactly.
You know, there's, I mean, there's, to me, I started thinking about this as I was reading through that and thinking, there's so much involved in that, and so many connections in different ways throughout the city, whether it be utility billing, you know, I mean, there's just, there's a lot of things that all interconnect in that, and if we had to get to the point where we're trying to enforce that, that may add to staff, add to staff time. You know, hopefully, we don't get to that point, hopefully, it's a, you know, a compliant group, and we get, you know, people that want to be part of that, just like the show with our Chamber and, you know, part of Main Street, that it really helps them when they are part of those groups. So we just got to get out there and sell it.
So we're collecting money so we have a pool so we could administer to those people who don't pay?
It's, it's offsetting the cost. I mean, there's, there's a cost to staff to administer.
I know, it was just funny the way you said it. How many businesses are there that would, we need to chase down now?
2,000.
2,000. And, and keep in mind, we're not doing home-based businesses, because they're not included.
Okay. Mike?
Would it be the same for an industrial business opposed to a coffee shop?
Yes.
That's why we did the nominal fee across the board. We certainly could come up with a fee structure based upon another criteria. It would just make it more difficult to administer.
There, there are some that do it based on square footage.
Yeah.
You know, and which, you have a hundred thousand square foot warehouse, that's cost more, but we, we thought it's just easier administratively just to do it as a one-flat fee for everybody.
I just think that a small business paying the same as a big, big business, I, I don't know if I'm for or against it yet, but I couldn't see a business bringing in millions of dollars a year of revenue paying the same amount that a business that brings $100,000 a year in revenue. The, the million-dollar business have fun trying to chase down the one person that's going to get the $500,000 from.
Responsible for doing that.
They both, they both pose problems, yeah.
And the cost of administering, you, it would be the same regardless of the business size, so it would basically go against the idea to keep it, you know, a low cost of value for everyone.
Yeah, we can't really charge the, that's going to be truly a revenue source, we're really only supposed to be charging what's offsetting our cost to administer a program, so.
I have a question about that, though, because when we were talking about that one situation in Willowbrook, the chemical processes, so you're not going to be asking those kind of questions, let's say, to one of those boardwalk shops that just opened up a brick and mortar.
We are actually, because they, they too have an NAICS code that's retail.
Okay.
So they'll, they also will have that same type of code. They may not know it, so, and that's the, the thing with the smaller business, there's probably a lot more touch points with them, certainly during, during COVID, that was who we were interacting with most in our community in terms of the businesses, so.
And, and that said, some of the codes that are industrial, they may end up involving some more follow-up with fire, because they're going to want a little more detail.
Right.
If they're going to be, you know, a chemical processing facility, then we're going to probably want to know what level of chemicals do you have and what quantities and things like that. So that's going to be something more of a follow-up.
Not to get into the weeds, but what happens, I'm Nick Serone LLC, and I own four franchises in town. Do I have to do one for each building?
Physical location would have...
Each physical location.
What about Aldi, they have a corporate center, and then they have a store?
Two.
One for each, yes.
Is it campus, one location or...
It would be one.
You want to give Aldi a discount, is what you're saying? We can write in a discount for poor little Aldi.
We're going to be delivering the licenses, we're going to be delivering the licenses in a bag, plastic bag, so.
The city council spots you guys Aldi.
Reusable.
Way too soon. Garbage stickers.
$50.10, so.
What if a home-based business wants to be a member, like a part of the...
If they would like to, they could certainly, you know, license themselves if we would like to, that we're not going to stop them.
Again, that, that makes me think of what the benefit could be.
Right.
Is, you know, somebody at a corporation sits down and they look through, and they look through the list of the businesses that they can get from the city and say, "You know what? They don't buy from us, they don't buy from us, and they don't buy from us. Why?" And then they go out and they make that connection, and then those two businesses end up supporting each other.
Or even for the city of Batavia to realize who are our Batavia businesses that we can do more business with.
And there are programs that do license home occupations. Now, what we do from a zoning standpoint is we have a home occupation, it's, it's a certificate, basically, to just fill out a form that just says, "We comply with all the home occupation standards," and that's only if we get a complaint about them that we say, "Okay, we want to make sure that you're following all the zoning things. There's no fee, nothing involved with that, it's just a documentation thing more than anything." But certainly, if somebody wanted to license a home-based business, can do it, sure.
Okay. With that, I will make the motion that we recommend to council ordinance 2231, amending Title III of the city code to revise business license requirements and clarify the business registration process.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Beck. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Abstain.
Serone?
No.
Boglissinger?
Aye.
Miller, absent. Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly, absent. Chancet, absent. And Sofa?
Aye.
Motion carried nine to one.
Okay. We'll move on then to project status.
There are some nights when we get to project status where I, because we had a city council meeting yesterday, I really don't have anything to add, so unless anybody has a question for me about a particular project, I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah.
Laura, I just have a quick question, and maybe this would be better under other, but the new fire engine.
Yes.
I was talking about the push-in.
Yes.
Do we have any time or date about that?
The date is looking like June 18th. The time is to be determined, but it, we usually host those things in the morning, so I think that it would be probably sometime between 8:00 and 10:00 o'clock, but the fire department is creating a flyer for that event that we will be sure to broadcast far and wide, because we are very excited to share that event with the community.
It's coming up very quickly.
It is.
Okay, does anybody have any others, any other questions?
I have one quick question.
We need to change, Sarah, we need to change the background because your little yellow hand disappears on the wall back there.
You need a dark wall, maybe.
A lot of children's artwork behind me I can display. I just was wondering, and this might not be known as of yet, but is there a specific target market for the apartments that are going near the quarry apartments?
The apartments that are going near the quarry apartments?
Yes.
Does, what...
Matter. I'm not sure if I...
I don't know.
No, yeah, I don't know.
Okay, that was a note that I received from somebody else, so if that's not accurate, it's a nine-unit development, is that...
Maybe, Sarah, if you could send me an email about the location of that, I can follow up with you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I will need a motion for executive session for setting the price of land for sale. So moved. Second. Motion by Uer, second by Serone. Roll call, please.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Boglissinger?
Aye.
Miller? Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly? Chancet? Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Emma Lee?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
See you in executive session.